Hi there, hey, it's all right. Good night. I can do another.
Cameron?
Hello, hello.
Cameron? I don't have your dossier, Cameron.
Okay, should be coming. Okay, Sarah.
Appreciate it, man.
Okay. Ready to get started? Cameron?
Yes, I think we're all set.
Okay, are we all ready? Okay, hi, hello, this is David Mandy, President of O and M Partners. I want to welcome everyone today to the Golden Arrow Resources Town Hall Call. We greatly appreciate your attendance. We're going to introduce the investors through O and M, and I know that Sean also brought a big group of investors on the line as well. So we certainly welcome everyone on the call. I don't have the names of everyone, but we'll introduce the group that came through O and M. We have Art Yevan on the line with us from Golden Glass Securities in Miami. Bruce Lazier from Dallas, Texas, he's a private investor. Chris Dvorak joins us from Dvorak Technical Research, he's out in Plymouth, Minnesota. We have Chuck Deeds from Deeds Select Advisors in Leewood, Kansas. George Assad joins us from Quentin Miller in Boston. We've got Heinz Toma, Toma Finn and Associates in Annapolis. Herb Stiles joins us from Stiles Family Partnership Baltimore. We have Steve Renshler from Green Room Consultants in Pennsylvania. Cameron, have I missed anyone?
No, I think that's...
You think that's the group? You've got the group? Okay, um, give me a second here. I have a real problem with everything here. Okay. Cameron, I think we've got some names of people that I didn't introduce, so you're going to need to go over that. Golden Arrow Resources trades under the symbol GRG on the TSX Venture and the OT symbol G A R W F. Golden Arrow is a member of the Grasso Group, and today presenting, we have Mr. Joseph Grasso, he's the Executive Chairman, the CEO, and the President. Joe's one of the early pioneers of the mining sector in Argentina, goes back to 1993 when mining was open for foreign investment. As I said, he's the founder and President of the Grasso Group back in 2005. Joe was named Argentina's Mining Man of the Year. He has successfully formed strategic alliances and negotiations with mining industry majors such as Barrick Tech, Newmont, Viceroy, which is now Yamana Gold and Vale, as well as government officials at all levels. So that's quite a skill set. We also have on the line with us Niko Koshkosh, he's with Director, Vice President, Corporate Development. We have Sean Perger on the line with us, who's in charge of Corporate Communications, and Derek Urquhart, who's the Chief Financial Officer and Corporate Secretary. So we've got quite a group on the call with us today. Cameron, anyone else I missed there? I guess not. Okay, we're going to turn the call over to Joe, and we'll go from there. Okay, Joe, over to you.
David, I want to thank you for allowing me one more time doing a Town Hall, and I want to really thank my great Sean Perger, you know, best relation person that is so keen and so enthusiastic that I just have to be keen and enthusiastic to follow him. But what I would like to do, I would like to take at least a bit of the time and cover as much territory as I can. My presentation is basically, I've done a summary of what is important. What is important for you to know is that truly, truly we deal with two unexplained stroke of luck that we have had, and I definitely believe, and I call them celestial, but that doesn't offend anybody. The first celestial was that the South American countries were aggressively going into the mining industry for whatever reason, and that included Argentina, this was mid to late 800 century, and going into the 19th century, everybody stayed in the mining industry quite successfully, and Argentina decided not to go and go into the agriculture. Now, I'll explain for people who says why, well, hopefully because Argentina is one of the eight largest countries in the world with 2.78 million square kilometers, and to the magnitude of this country, Chile alone shares 5,300 kilometers, and if you are the Brazil at the top, Uruguay, Paraguay, Uruguay, and Bolivia, it's the share, Argentina shares international borders with 9,300 kilometers, it's an enormous amount. Anyway, all of them went into the mining industry and they're being successful, some more and some less, but all have contributed to their economy. Argentina being so big, they basically said, look, being in the mining business is complicated and expensive, so I'll tell you what we do, we got so much fertile land beside the non-fertile land, and they have plenty of that, but the fertile land, it says, we can put a seed in the ground, we see a plant within a week, we eat the fruit or the product six months later, and we sell what we don't eat. So we think that this is a pretty good change. So they kind of liked that, and believe it or not, they created an industry and a contribution to their economy, making them one of the biggest economy in the world, including the United States, on agriculture. Well, things have changed for them, and the decision that was successful in making the very powerful also made some other decisions that the buoyancy did not last too long, and, but never ever turned Argentina into a country that would go in the mining business. Now, I am calling this the first celestial opportunity that was presented to me 25 years ago, and I thought that this was something that I should not pass. What should I not pass was perpetuated by me, our company, ordering a study, choosing other universities and others notorious geologists to come up with a study. And I'm going to be showing you a study that was initiated by me in 1993 and was completed in 1995. And my enthusiasm, when I saw the results of this study, it is unbelievable, and the first opportunity was not to miss the opportunity of looking at mining as a potential industry that I wanted to go on. Obviously, I was contaminated a little bit from living in Vancouver for 20 years where you had never too far from mining, so I had the bug, and I had to really pursue this opportunity because in the mid to late 1880s, there was a lot of mining that was discovered but never followed up, for the simple purpose that we take too much money to do exploration, take too much money to bring up a project to production, and it's true. I mean, first of all, rare, it's very rare to find a deposit. The second one is that if you do find a deposit, you've got to do feasibility study and spend literally hundreds of millions of dollars, and in the case, in the case study of Chinchilla, which our discovery that we're taking forward, if we had to take public ourselves and raise the money required, it would require money for feasibility study, fifteen, twenty million dollars, it would require anywhere between 400, 450 million dollars to direct the infrastructure for production, and in order to do that, it would take approximately seven, six, seven years to reach the state where you could put your project, your product and your deposit in production. Well, and so I, that's the first thing that I'm basically telling you that the view Argentina of their mining was almost zero. If you look at the map that we're putting on, okay, this was the view in your crystal long because Joseph Grasso Group and his company decided to revive this. So this is why my nickname in Argentina is the pioneer. And on here we did, and now I'll take a quick look at Argentina today. When we read that report and knowing, and knowing that the geology in other countries surrounding country has extended, or extended millions of years ago, by 200 kilometers on the surface or the under-surface of Argentina. And so if you take a look at the eight largest countries in the world with 2.78 million square kilometers, you can imagine how long it is. It is Los Angeles to New York, plus, plus. So we started pioneering it, and we staked the property, obviously. The property was staked by the professional people that actually compiled the study, and obviously, they chose the best location with, where there were production and best geology, and that does not disappoint us because we are known as an exception that we have discovered three major world discoveries. The first one was in 1998, was a gold discovery, Walclavio, now owned and operated by Yamana, and the second one was Navidad. We call it Navidad because we discovered it the week of Christmas, and Navidad is Christmas in Argentina. And this project is one of the biggest known in the world even currently, with 1.2 billion ounces of silver equivalent, and it's just been fully in production, I believe recently they've started. There was a third discovery. The third discovery that we made was in North Argentina, and it was Chinchilla, and we felt that making discoveries, selling them, and then spending the money, spending the money on only exploration, it wasn't going to be fine. So we decided that we would look for a partner, and where the second incredible celestial miracle called Synergy was when they were definitely tested in trying to see how we could come up with four, five, 600 million dollars and diluting the company and going for about six, seven years before we could be in production. Well, the miracle was that we read in the paper that Silver Sands, it now is called RR, SSR Mining, was closing their operation, which was exactly our need, and they had a turnkey situation with experienced operator with eight years of production continuously, and what they needed to keep it up, to keep it open and continuing, they were obviously very desperate to continue with their multi-hundred million dollars operation, and they were definitely cut off the lucrative yearly income. And so we sat down, we needed what they had, and they needed what we had very badly, and we decided to make a partnership. The partnership with them is, we have called, we have got a corporate name, it's called Puna Operations Inc., and we are operating in a fair and very flattering percentage. They gave us 25% for giving them an early-stage resource, and they put in what would be eventually between 500 and 600 million dollars replacement value, plus the dilution, which we are also offering. And we are at the moment at the tail end of the integration of Chinchilla, which has been permitted, and of course, their production is already permitted, and we will soon enter the total supply of their need sometime in mid-July. So four, five months away. So it is an incredible story, a story that is going to be generating a great value. We, the projection that was done by a professional, it shows that we could reach the eight-year first stage, ready to go, and underway, we could earn up to 1.2 billion dollars, 2 billion dollars, which we will own at 25%. Now, this is what we had that we started with, it was all, all the values was underground, and what we needed was what is now, and what we got to be partners of was, it's an ongoing, fully permitted production facility, and look at, if this doesn't look like millions of dollars, so we are part of this as well, 25%, and we are making, making a fast-tracking production with limited capex. To bring this into full partnership, we are going to be paying 25% of 81 million dollars capex, and when you see that, when you see that our amount would be approximately low or mid-20 million versus 600 million that we'd have to invest otherwise, well, again, I would like to invite anyone to do a study on the validity that the eight years that we're starting with is only the beginning. I would like to show you that, well, what we're showing here is a property which is in the middle of all the green stars, is the trend that comes in from Bolivia. All the green stars are in production, so we are not just in any place. So in order to do, what we have said that we're going to be earning 1.1 billion or 1.2 billion over eight years, that little square which says NI43101 drilled, that is the only exploration that we have done so far, and what is ahead of us would be decades of potential new production, so Chinchilla has a long way to go potentially, and we could not say enough about our partners. They are recognized as the most efficient producers, and we are known as very efficient exploration, with our technical team discovering three discoveries in one country, it is the most unheard of from a small, from a small junior. We make sure that our skills, that we have had so much success, will continue, but we're not going to be going forward, exploring, and using our best talents as Golden Arrow, but we are making a subsidiary which will be called New, will be called New Golden Exploration Inc., and this will be for the time being, excuse me, I'll just take some water. Oh, thank you, Niko. New Golden Exploration Inc., it will continue in its success with the same professional and the same 215,000 hectares of property which are still ideally located, that can generate the fourth and the fifth new discovery soon. The exploration money, however, I must say that will be spent by venture capital instead of spending the early money. Well, we'd like to show you this last picture, which is pretty dramatic. If you don't believe that we could come up with another deposit quickly, there is a red arrow indicating one of the biggest gold production by Barrick called Navidad, yeah, Beladero, and it's the pit called Filo Ferri Rico, that has been in production for now many years, and will continue on. Now, look at the bottom where it says Poteridigo Project, it's less than seven kilometers away from the pit to where they're digging up the gold up. So I quite believe that we have several projects in this close proximity to historical event that they already have discoveries. In conclusion, and I'm sorry for my throat, but in conclusion, I feel that a company which has a mere 98 million shares outstanding with the value that we have, both in the first stream, which could gain us anywhere between 125 million dollars per year, and the new values that we are bound to come up with new discoveries, with the exception that the new discoveries, we will seek venture capital by diluting that new company by 40%. Therefore, in conclusion, Golden Arrow will have a 60% control care rate, care rate interest without every deposit, any money, and leaving for the money that we earn out of production to spending by more income and more partnership with producing small companies that would like to expand. I, my apology with a bad throat and an Italian accent, I don't know if it's Italian or Spanish anymore, they, in Argentina, they think I'm a native Argentinian, I am just a native Italian with, with an Italian accent that speak fluent, fluent but with an accent Spanish. Our, as you can imagine, our luck has been, being in a country where they're very proud, they've had their checkers history, I feel that the governments right now are, it's definitely one of the best that they've ever had, is strongly committed to mining, reviving mining, and they are granting incentives and improving the speed of new investors and new exploration company coming to Argentina. I would like to say in final analysis that we are going through bull reason stock market, but let's face it, we're trading at 55 cents US or 65 cents Canadian in the amount of value that we have, we have soft with no dilution, a turnkey situation going in production without, just like instantly, without waiting, and we have the management team to make your company grow. We have the passion, we have the interest, and management owns a larger control position because we believe in the growth of the company and the growth of Argentina and the turning around of the natural resource market. I am opening for some questions, I'll try to make it short, the answers.
Thank you, Joe. Great presentation, Joe. Sean, do you want to add anything, or we go right to questions? Is that how we want to do it?
All right, I think we'll go right to questions. Joe covered a lot of good material there. I just want to state that I'm the investor relations person at the company, and I'm always available, contact me whenever you like, and we'll get whatever you need to make a proper decision on an investment with us.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Joe. Okay, we're going to start with Heinz Toma. Heinz, questions for Joe?
Yeah, hi. Joe, thanks for the presentation. Do I understand this correctly that... Do I understand this correctly, that this New Golden Exploration is going to be your, your new venture, your new company for exploration? Uh, what is going to happen?
The New Golden, the New Golden Exploration, we have separated, uh, well, let me, I mean, it's a very good question, I'm glad you asked. Don't forget the twenty-five years we found, we found discoveries and we sold to survive and spent the money that we sold the projects with a fractional gain and spent it on exploration, exploration. And the second one, we, so we, we found projects, but we materialized up to about forty, forty-five million dollars and we put it back into exploration. Now, they, they, they bore food to for, for us because we have Chinchilla and we spend a great deal of our money to find Chinchilla. But now we're changing the game. We change in the game because we feel that the Golden Arrow resources should stay with growing by reinvesting the yearly income that comes in. There are, and because of our popularity, we have, we're not short of, of smaller operators very reputable that would like to expand as they look at, 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 at some investments and we are looking for minority, quite frankly. Uh, an exploration company is not a producer. A producer is not an exploration company. So with that understood, now that we joined at the rank of producers, we are in production. And we'd like to retain that by investing the earning uh into acquiring more projects that have profitable projects that will benefit with a minimum investment, that will produce more and make more money. So uh, we have basically isolated by creating a subsidiary which we call New Golden Exploration. So that was formed as a subsidiary by putting in the company all the old, all the inventory that we already have, all the properties that we have shown at you, which are an incredible proximity to producers and therefore having an opportunity to come up with more discovery. But the money to do exploration, we are attracting in venture capital investors that wanted to be associated with us. We are in discussion uh with diluting the hundred percent of the subsidiary that we own with diluted by forty percent, keeping sixty percent carried value uh for Golden Arrow and the forty percent obviously will be uh the right owner of, because they put up the money. This is possible, it's not pie in the sky, it is ongoing and happening as we talk. So your Golden Arrow, that fifty-four percent US or sixty-five, is going to be growing because if you take the value today at twenty-five percent of approximately replaceable assets costing close to six-hundred million dollars, we have ninety-eight million shares outstanding, I think that the calculation is pretty easy, uh, with a hundred, with ninety-eight million shares, it would be about a dollar fifty, but that is only the, the production. There is the other, the other side, which is the new exploration, which I think will going to be enormously successful.
That up behind?
That would be the second, the second value that you, the shareholder, and if you're not, hurry up, day one, we'd like to, we'd like to have you as a shareholder. So uh, I, I believe that management has been very, very lucky and we take the celestial luck, but also we've been working very, very hard passionately to make a good deal for our shareholders and we continue that.
Thank you, Joe. Anything else, Heinz? Does that help you?
Yeah, yeah, it's fine, thank you.
Thank you, Heinz. So we're going to turn to Peter Trapp. Peter, do you have any questions for Joe? Okay, we're going to turn to Herb Stiles. Herb?
Today, I'd like to ask you a question about the Perquitas Chinchilla, uh, what do you call it? You call it Puna Operations, that joint venture in which you have a twenty-five percent interest?
Yeah, just to keep it simple, for the shareholder, understand that we have a project here, which has a, which is a, a company which has been formed and the shareholders are seventy-five percent uh SSR or Silver Standard of Jewish and twenty-five percent us. And having said that, we, as I said, we're, we're humble, but I, how lucky we are that we end up having twenty-five percent on what should have been maybe five percent, but they're good people and they give recognition that this is a major win for them, they're going to save business and bring good money every, every year. And so therefore, uh, there is the, the, the stream one production and we own seventy-five for them, twenty-five percent.
Well, here's, here's the question about that. That twenty-five percent interest means that you will also be required to put up twenty-five percent of any cash needs, cash funding needs of that operation. You're going to be generating maybe twenty, twenty-five million dollars a year as your share of the income or cash flow. Would you need to raise more money? Can you profile for me how much money you have to spend as your share of meeting the funding needs of that subsidiary?
Well, because, because it gets a very good question as well, it's very good. Chinchilla started really the, the career being a, being a producer a couple of years ago when we made the, first made an agreement with them, which they paid at the end, they gave us eighteen, eighteen point five million dollars, which we, we cashed in, we have still fourteen left. Uh, but that's specifically answering your question, uh, in order to complete, uh, you see, we, we just got permitted a couple of weeks ago, well, December, December twenty-eighth, we got permitted. Permit means that the, the Puna, the, the, it, the production plan has been, has been permitted for eight or nine years and having a greater production experience on top of it. But Chinchilla was a new find that was in the area, twenty, twenty-five, thirty kilometers away and had to go through a second exploitation uh study, which entailed about eighteen communities who had to sign and say, yeah, my river are okay, the lakes are okay, my sheep are okay and we're happy with what happened. And so that is, that was what the permit was all about. Now, we have done a great job and we are greater citizen of Argentina. And we were permitted to go in the location with the, where the discovery is and dig, dig ore, ore mineral and put it on a truck that would be transported to the, the already going uh explorat- uh, for processing plant. That processing plant is very, very modern and has, has growth. We do fervently that with the price of silver going even in the slide up, we're afraid to know, our projections are based on nineteen dollars and fifty cents, which I think is extremely conservative over a period of uh eight years. Now specifically to answer your question, this integration, this final integration that accounts for what capex we have to come up with, that's what we're facing right now. We are, we, we will be responsible to participate, one-time charge, of course, uh, somewhere within twenty-one to twenty-three million dollars. We uh, we have at the moment a fourteen and yes, we are looking for financing to pay for our capex. Uh, have I answered your question?
Except that you should be earning uh from the first year of operations, I think, twenty to twenty-five million dollars as your share of that enterprise's operations. Why can't you pay for it just out of your first year's cash flow, as a matter of fact?
Well, that's, that's an interesting question as well. We're not going to issue shares for that. We're looking what the balance sheet is going to be supporting in terms of, of, of uh new earnings and we can raise up to thirty million dollars on, on interest, on interest alone uh for two or three years and we can pay it with a very easy, very easy charging income that we have projected, that we come in. So in a sense, I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you. We don't have, we don't have the total amount in our, in our package. If we're going to do, and do the last uh integration change, which the capex is required, those are plenty machinery that we're adding to expand and you're going to pay now. You cannot pay as you will, you gotta pay now, so.
Mr. Gross, I don't want to take too much of your time, I have one more question about that. Um, if you're, I, I think that you've indicated that that's an underexplored property around Chinchillas as well and that, I think I understood that you're going to invest all the proceeds for now and forevermore from this operation back into the Chinchillas operation rather than divert it into new, uh, New Golden Explorations. Is, is that correct or are you going to take some of that cash and put it into New Golden Explorations?
Well, very, very, very good question and the reason I like it because it, it clears that the new, the New Golden Exploration, it's a company on its own that raises its own money to go in exploration. So that's why we call, that is a second stream of value that uh Golden Arrow has without putting up a standard. They put up the, they put up the value of the property which have been transferred into it and that is it. Now, it's the new people, so it will be a partnership of sixty for us, forty for them for putting up the money. And now, you've got to remember that that is a different company altogether. We're talking about Chinchilla and if you remember uh the, the picture that we showed you, there is an enormous amount of property that still is available for developing uh in the future. There's a, a second photo there which shows not all, not all the drill value that the company that Puna has are going into this first stage. We have, we have not only more than ninety percent that we can drill for the remainder of the property, but we also have uh already drilled forty-three-one-on-one value that can be developed at any time. But as you can appreciate, I'm sure you're a good business man about the question you asked, that is an imminent, an imminent or as imminent as the silver price goes up a little bit, and I'm not talking about ten dollars, five dollars. So uh, the, the, the Chinchilla and the partnership, it's a, it's a first stream that we'll be passing, but that's got its own life. We generate, uh, we, we, we don't necessarily have to go and raise money, we could commit the earnings, if we need more, more earnings, it's a working capital. So you don't expand by, by loans, you expand by working, using your working capital. But this is all management, uh, you know, you've got to look in the future and say, what would it be? But it is a good thought.
Okay, thank you, sir. I, I think I understand, you've answered my question. Thanks again.
All right.
Thanks, Herb. We're going to go to Bruce Lazier. Bruce, do you have any questions for Joe? Bruce Lazier? All right, let's go to then to Steve Renshler. Cameron, you got Steve on unmuted?
Am I unmuted now?
You are indeed, Steve.
Okay. Now, Mr. Grass, so when I think of your company, I think of an, an exploration company, uh, and I understand the separation into the two entities. In Puna, once you get through your initial capex requirement, let's just say in a year and a half or two years, why not declare a significant dividend, which I would think would certainly help your stock price instead of looking for other operators who need, you know, funds for expansion or, or whatever? Because from everything you've said, when I think about you, I think your core competency is, is really exploration, but even if you took ten million dollars a year against a hundred million dollar share, a hundred million share count, you've got a significant yield and I would think your price on the stock would skyrocket.
Well, let me, let me, let me reword the question to you. Uh, me, my family and my friends were the major shareholders by far. Don't you think that we have a vested, a vested interest to make that decision when it comes up? I think the only thing we're reporting to you now, what's in place and what the potential is. The potential, when it would be firmed up, will be discussed, the criteria and, and, and yeah, I, I definitely would like my stock to be in that three, four, five dollars where it deserves to be.
Okay, and then just one other question, I'm curious, have you been able to?
Let me interrupt you. I'm interrupt you and don't consider me rude. The second, the second company, the second that this, the exploration company, you and I own sixty percent, any value that materializes, money or value or anything, it accrues to the value of the shares that we own, including, and I'm not pinning myself down because it's a normal decision as a directors, we may give a dividend of the second company to each shareholder. So they have two certificates, have the certificate of uh Gold, Golden Arrow Producer and Golden Arrow Exploration.
Okay, thank you very much.
We, well, we actually, we must be celestial twins because I think of the same thing, I think of- I'm thinking about the future and all the things so that we can do. All the things that we've done, it's history. We're not gonna lie and, 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 and say that's it. We are, we are propelled by what we have been able to do and we wanted to more for us and the shareholders, of course.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks for your question.
Thank you, Steve. I'm gonna turn to Cameron. Cameron, questions that were emailed to you?
Yeah, a couple of people had some questions. This one comes from Brendan Valentine. When does New Gold Exploration go public for purchasing?
God, you guys are a real challenger there. You, you're asking me fantastic question. I'm excited to do it again tomorrow, eh? This, I, I think it's uh, uh, I don't know that everybody will understand, I'm sure that it was crazy, but it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a future business. Now, we could take a look at the, the exploration company public right now and uh, and we could receive from uh the, the listing authority permit to issue shares uh twenty-five cents because it, we have transferred property which is unable to discover there, some advanced, but they do have a, a value at the moment. And the value right now, if we have to raise uh, the money that we require, it would be two dilution, dilute, we'll have a lot of shares that we get to issue. So we're asking you meantime that you have to be patient and accept the meantime that we go and keep it not public, but attract a major investor that will bring in eight to ten million dollars to acquire forty percent. But when we spend that, that within ten and twelve million dollars on the property creates a value. Now, if we list to the company, the, the, the listing authority have no choice but give us a current value and so we would be listing your shares, which, which you learn if you want to hear, uh instead of twenty-three cents or twenty-five, we can list them at eighty-five or a dollar twenty. By doing after we found the value, we go now and say, well, if this, we just got a bunch of properties here which have got uh good potential. Well, potential, you cannot take it to the bank, but what you can take to the bank is that when you ever drill and come up with values which, which propels the new stock listing after the value is found and propels and adds sixty percent to Golden Arrow, which has a carry, a free carried sixty percent carried interest. Understand that?
Yeah, no, that's good. Um, then I guess.
Others is out. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be too long, but uh listed or not listed, our companies in material because if we make a news announcement that we found the this and this and this and then we go to another property, we find it's a more good value and we're not listed, it doesn't matter because you see a reaction in the Golden Arrow that will reap the benefits.
Mm-hmm. And then I guess also following that, um, can you provide a little more details on the up to forty percent fundraising for the spin-off exploration? Do you plan to do a smaller cap raise and then dilute over time or at higher valuations or um?
Are you, are you, are you giving me two questions? Sorry, but two different companies.
Mm-hmm.
The, the CapEx in order to get us in full production, I just need a full machinery that from now uh until July that we will be fully providing, uh it takes those machinery to be in place. So we got to raise money and we do not want to raise money by equity. We want to raise money by, by renting money, pay them a, a good uh interest and then we pay them off without, without endangering the value of the dilution that you, that we would suffer. Uh now that is for the production. For the exploration, there's no such a thing of being able to borrow. But that one there, they just put in twelve million and they own forty percent, but he doesn't hope he's gonna get forty percent, which the shares costing fifty cents or twenty cents or a dollar fifty. So in other words, we there, we are in one barrel by using their money.
I see.
Is it clear?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Uh, this is another question. Uh, what's the present value of the discounted cash flow, cash flow from feasibility?
Uh.
One hundred and seventy.
One hundred and seventy-eight. Yeah, it's, it's, it's another little picture, one hundred and seventy-eight million.
Okay. And then um last one, can you expand the mill to accommodate an inferred resource of two hundred million uh silver equivalent to increase cash flow?
The, the. You're, you're talking about this nickel, go ahead.
Yeah, the mill currently runs, it has a capacity to run at four thousand tons per day and that's what all the pre-feasibility studies have shown, but we know through the disclosures that we've put up the path, that SSR mining has put up the path, they're running this at twenty-five percent higher than the capacity at five thousand tons per day. So, yeah, if you're gonna go beyond that for a new mill, it's a, it's a new CapEx requirement and that's not being calculated at this time.
Gotcha. No, thanks.
We're hoping that we're gonna leave because the price of silver goes up, but at this point, we got our hands full and uh, uh, I, I, I think we're doing a good job for you. I'm, I am sorry, I am sorry because that's our deal that we made, it's not understood. I demand you to that we created this beautiful deposit that would have taken years and years and population, it's in dilution and we came up with a dirty situation, avoiding all the risks. It, it's an amazing, an amazing, uh, an amazing thing and it's amazing for them too, you know? They had to write off uh the several hundred million dollars completely off, plus had to come up with the cost of closing uh costs that are, that mandatory to uh, to reclaim the surface the way it used to be. So uh if you think about it, between Argentina keeping their deposit dormant for about almost eighty, eighty to ninety years and we come up there and we unlocked it, that, that was incredible find for me. And the second one was this synergy that I couldn't sleep for quite a few nights, it was, it, 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 am I not thinking in English? It sounded like so outrageously good and it, and it is, and it is. We've done a good job for you.
You certainly have, Joe. Sean, are there any questions from your group that you wanna ask or?
No, I, I think we've pretty much got a lot of our, our in cover here.
Are we in a good place? Okay, well, we've got one more question, Cameron, okay?
One more quick one that just came in. Um, can you provide some update on the exploration program? Did it start in early November and um how many properties are you exploring right now? And when do you expect the results?
Well, we are uh, we're, our office, our permitting office is busy full-time in making uh new application for new exploration and we are exploring right now Antofaya and we'll be looking to have a couple of more projects which show that we should be, so it's, it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing thing. Uh but I really, the, the bulk of the major exploration uh programs are gonna, are gonna be when we raise more money to venture capital. We'll even, we'll even accept your check, except that's got to be cash against future. I'm joking, that, that, that is, that is a joke. But the better than I can answer is uh your question is that Antofaya has the same mineral edition exactly as they must, Chinchilla. Strange enough, it's located at two hundred kilometers to the south of Argentina, in, in Catamar- in Catamarca. But it is four times bigger than Chinchilla's. And if you look on our printed material, circulating, you will see some preliminary results which are mind-boggling and that could very likely be a next potential discovery.
Thanks, much appreciated.
Okay, if there are no further questions, we're going to proceed to close. Joe, any closing remarks before we uh, before we end the call?
Well, you, you, the, it's, it's another remark, but I gotta express a, a deep, deep gratitude. You are a great friend and we consider the audience that you put together and we, we are privileged to share our anxiety at times that we get so excited that we are not very clear and we stay excited and we are clear what we're doing forward. But we are excited and we all have to join forces to endure the ups and downs of the market, uh, and so on and so on and so on. Uh, I think we're well-equipped to manage, well-equipped to manage.
Thank you, Joseph. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sean, and thank the whole team.
Patience is the most important thing, not just money, cost, money, money and patience.
Agreed, Joseph, agreed. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance today. I wish you a most pleasant evening and thank you again, Joe, for your presentation. That was very helpful for everyone. Thank you.